Okay, could we all rise for the pledge?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Fryre.
Here.
Mr. Posnau.
Here.
Mr. Robinson.
Here.
Mr. Sanders.
Here.
Mr. Skellett.
Here.
Mrs. Schrader.
Here.
Mr. Sears.
Here.
And Mr. Tillman.
Here.
Thank you. Reminder, please silence your cellphones for the course of the meeting. That means you too, Jane. The purpose of this special meeting is to interview candidates, nominate, appoint, and swear on a new board member. The way, first of all, I'm really gratified that there are that many of you that really want to do this. This is not two hours a month. This is probably 20 to 30 hours a month of time. So I'm really, really impressed that that many of you want to come out for this. The way we'll do this tonight is that each candidate will be invited to make a personal statement somewhere on the order of two to three minutes. We will invite you to respond to questions that I think you've seen, and then you can have a closing 30 seconds. At the end of the process, when everybody has had a chance, what we will do is we'll take nominations from the floor, and then we will vote on those nominations. Takes five votes to win. We'll go through cycles until we have five. So if like three people nominated the first time, we'll go through it again and again until we have one remaining. Okay? Am I missing one on the end? Okay. Mr. Eden. Would you like to make an opening statement?
Hello, I'm Scott Eden, 800 Grantley Court in York. I know most of you. So I was elected to the school board, I guess in 14 or 15, and so I have a lot of experience being on the board. And then part of my divorce, I was living downtown and no longer living in the district, and why I resigned from the board. And when this came up, I decided it was a nice chance to maybe get back involved. I kind of missed doing this and being involved with everything and just all the policies and the people. Let's see, I went to York Suburban. I graduated '89, a year after Steve. I have a daughter who's in first grade at Valley View. I went to Washington &amp; Lee, was an economics and geology major, have a law degree, and I have a master's in tax law from NYU. I was a securities attorney. A lot of board work I did in my corporate life before I now own a restaurant and bar downtown. And I would just like the opportunity to serve again.
So how would you rate the school district?
I mean, I would rate it one of the top in the state. Obviously, I went there. My child goes there. It's a choice. We had her at Country Day preschool, and once kindergarten came along, we definitely put her in York Suburban. And I was here when the Blue Ribbon, the Blue Ribbon Award for one of the top schools in the state. And I think it's, you know, for the size, I think the level of professionals is very high, but they attract a lot of teachers from out of town when we have a vacancy, I know. So it's definitely a sought-after district for people who want to come here. And I think for the size of our district also, we have many extracurricular activities. And I know we've made great efforts to hit all aspects, even like, I know the theater when we voted on getting new lighting and sound. That was an important, important part of having a well-rounded student body in the district.
So what would you do to improve it? If we're wonderful, I'm not sure.
What do you do to improve it?
Yeah.
Maybe continue with, I know some of the hard parts are, you know, for the diversity with ESL, and those are the struggles I know at the lower, sometimes at the lower levels of elementary, and to make sure that we have a diverse student body and have the resources especially for autism and autistic support.
Describe the process for us that you use to make tough decisions and difficult decisions.
Typically, sort of a cost-benefit analysis, sort of look at what the cost is, what the benefits are, who it affects, how it affects them. And I think that's sort of a economic sort of basis. But you know, you have to look at everything. You know, not everything's going to be positive and everything's going to be bad. You just try to see which one outweighs the other.
Hey, you've attended a school board meeting, certainly.
Right.
So why now as opposed to general election?
I guess I just saw the email and said, "Why not?" So, yeah.
How would you describe the culture of Y.S.?
I think the culture is one of inclusiveness. It's one that where I think it's, I think from the very first day, they try to make sure everybody has pride in the district, just like the Valley View Teddy Day Parade, and they try to get all the younger kids to get there to the bonfire. And I think that it's one where there's accountability and one where the people feel welcomed also.
So, "School districts are challenged with a mission of providing the highest possible quality education to our students and supporting our faculty and administration while protecting our taxpayers from undue burden. Over the past several years, the state has been less than a useful partner in this exercise. As a new board member, what steps would you consider to ensure that we meet these missions?"
This is always a tough one, but I, one of the struggles I know I had on the school board was when the state would give you the percentage that you could raise the taxes, and some people just wanted to automatically take it scared that we wouldn't have enough money, whereas I kind of felt like we shouldn't just be going for the money grab, that I thought that as long as we could have our plan and the facilities and the long-term plans and meet all our expenses, especially with some of the backup funds we had, that we should try to make sure that we're not creating a greater tax burden than we already have.
Recent data from the Pennsylvania Youth Survey suggests significant numbers of York Suburban students are prone to increasing levels of stress and incidence of depression. Over the past three years, two students in the district have taken their own lives. How do you think the board should address this evidence?
Unfortunately, I think so much of it's societal and parents and social media and probably cellphones. But as a district, I think the best thing we can do is educate and have resources to try to prevent those, you know, to be able to identify people who have problems and maybe suffering from severe depression and other ones who may need the help afterwards or during, especially maybe, I don't know how early you'd start it, definitely by middle school, I think it'd be smart to take that head-on and try to, you know, with interviews of guidance counselors or special counselors to make sure that students are seen happy at home and school or their personal life.
And last one. If you were selected to fill this position, would it be your intention to run after this two-year term is up?
Yes.
Okay. Would you like to make a closing statement?
Thanks for the opportunity, and if selected, I'd be happy to join everybody again.
Thank you. Mr. Williams.
Good evening. My name is Jeremy Williams. For those of you that don't know me, I was born and raised in York County. I spent my entire life here essentially, with the exception of my undergraduate and graduate study. I grew up in West York. I graduated from West York, and I have a lot of ties to that. So I think it's important that the board know, first and foremost, that despite my ties and connections to that area, my wife and I went out of our way to move our kids to this district before they started school because we knew the type of reputation that Suburban had in terms of education, in terms of the parent, or excuse me, teacher-to-student ratios, the focus on AP coursework and their performance on standardized tests. We thought that this was the environment that would, you know, be most conducive to success for our kids. And that's really the whole reason why I'm here ultimately is because I want to effectuate change at this level. I venture to guess I'm one of the younger candidates in the room, and, you know, to answer some of these questions and to get out in front of them. Yes, I would intend to run and run for the foreseeable future. I think this is something that is a position that shouldn't be taken lightly. It's something that you should be ready to gear up for and stand for the long haul to actually see change through, you know, with the political process. It's often times that the actual agenda that was designed doesn't get carried out. So I'm sure most of the people in this room are qualified to sit, but I think it's important that the board look at who's qualified and also who wants to be here. You know, I'm ready to get to work. So, you know, I just want to let you know that I'm very excited to be here and I'm really humbled and honored that I have an opportunity to even be considered in this position.
Thank you. We're glad you're here too. Ooh, that's loud.
How would you rate the school district? Give us the rationale. I mean, you sort of said that in your introduction. And what, if anything, would you do to improve it?
Let me start by saying that I want to echo what I said initially during my opening was that I think the school district's great in terms of accounting. And that may put some people off that they may not be as, in such high regard across the state, but that's the fact of the matter. You know, there's no reason that this school district can't compete with private schools in Philadelphia and Allegheny Counties. There's just no reason why they shouldn't be. And based on my experience with the York Suburban Education Foundation, the number of kids that are attending Ivy League schools in this district has gone down since the early 2000s. Now, you might say that that could be for any number of reasons. Could be a bad sample or small sample size. But I think that it deals with specifically the amount of kids that are willing to take advanced placement courses. And the research shows that individuals that take those courses, the ones that really succeed long-term are the ones that can pass those examinations. It's not just enough getting the kids in there. I think the long-term success would be creating, for lack of a better term, cool environment to get kids interested and started earlier and have them fast-track basically for this type of coursework and their developmental skills.
And could you briefly describe for us the process you might use to make difficult decisions?
I like to think it's a pragmatic approach, but I generally try to, when making decisions of great importance, I like to identify what the best possible outcome is and then examine what hurdles or obstacles I might have getting there and what drawbacks could be created by those decisions. The most desirable outcome isn't always the best outcome for everybody. And that's what the school board does, is promote, you know, success for its student body and its constituency. So I think that that's how I would approach problems at this level.
You mentioned that you were involved with YSEF, but have you ever attended a school board meeting? What prompted your interest in seeking this vacancy at this time?
I have. I attended one back in 2017. Shortly after I attended the "So you want to be a member of the school board" presentation that was put on, I believe it was in May of '17 or somewhere around that timeframe. I believe it was actually maybe in this building. I don't recall specifically. But I did attend one just to see what it was like afterwards. And at the time, my partner was running a judicial race in the county, and I told him that I would run his campaign, and that's what happened. That's why I didn't get involved or throw my hat in the ring at that time. But the reason that I'm asking to be considered as a candidate is because it's just frankly much easier than running a campaign than to figure out what I could get into very easily without spending a lot of time and resources.
So if you were selected tonight, would it be your intention then to run in the general election in two years when this term is up?
Yes. I'm committed for the long haul, for the foreseeable future. I have three little girls that are actively in Suburban right now at two different elementary schools, and we're expecting our fourth daughter, the 28th of this month. So I'm going to be a fixture in this district for a long time.
That's good.
And I have stake in the outcome. I got skin in the game. And, you know, I don't know that everyone else does the same way that I do.
What would you say in terms of the culture of York Suburban? How would you describe the culture as you know it?
My understanding is that it's always been one of inclusion, and it's always been one that has had a focus on academics, which is the whole reason, like I said, we brought our kids here. And one thing that really resonated with me that bears this out, I believe, is that I took my daughters through the trick-or-treating through the high school, and on the outside of all the classrooms, it had the teacher's undergraduate degree, undergraduate degree, what schools they attended. And I'd never seen anything like that. I was so taken aback by that that I thought that that was great, that there is an active demonstration of being proud of what you did and what you've accomplished in an academic setting. So...
Good. "School districts are challenged with a mission of providing the highest possible quality education to our students, supporting our faculty and administration while protecting our taxpayers of undue burdens. Over the past several years, the state has been a less-than-useful partner in this process. As a new board member, what steps would you consider to ensure the district meets this mission?"
I'd first start by saying that I tend to agree with that sentiment generally. It's unfortunate that the powers that be have decided to reallocate monies to districts that they may just generally be pandering to win a political race. And that's just really, really unfortunate, but that's what we're dealt with. And anytime a district is subject to the deficit, they create organizations and nonprofits, like the York Suburban Education Foundation, which I'm actively involved in. And that's where, you know, the slap comes from. You know, it's on the members of the community, in my opinion. That's where I think a majority of the support would come from would be from like YSEF. They send out literature to the effect of how much money you can give them to have chickens, or hatchets in a classroom, which I thought was great.
And lastly, recent data from the Pennsylvania Youth Survey suggests significant numbers of York Suburban students are prone to increasing levels of stress and incidence of depression. Over the past three years, two students in the district have taken their own lives. How do you think the board should address this evidence?
I think they've got to address it head-on. That's a tragedy. Losing a child is something the parent should never have to deal with or digest. And as the school district, they are responsible for their supervision for nine months of the year, for 40 hours a week. And they have more interaction with the child on a day-to-day basis than the parent does. I'm not saying that the parent shouldn't at all be responsible or actively involved in addressing the issue, but the school has resources and opportunities to address some of these problems. And a majority of it, and in my, just to give you a little bit of background, I do primarily criminal defense work, so I have a lot of experience dealing with individuals that have experienced trauma in the past. All of the research tends to suggest that the initial disclosure or the initial inquiry into whether or not someone's been traumatized doesn't really amount to much the first time. It's that second investigation, that second inquiry into the trauma and how to fix that trauma going forward. So I think that, you know, to answer your question very simply is that there's got to be, you know, a serious focus on mental health issues and that it's not, you know, something that should be, you know, thought of as unpopular or something that people should be afraid to talk about, something that people need to understand. A lot of people deal with, and, you know, the number-one goal is to keep these kids safe. You know, that's our responsibility as a school. So, you know, that's what I think they could do.
Any closing remarks?
Just very briefly, I want to thank everyone for the opportunity to listen in for the last few minutes about this. And I genuinely, as I said earlier, I would be very much interested in, you know, serving the school board, and it would be an absolute honor and a privilege, and I hope that I'll be nominated. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Jackson.
Hi. I haven't been in my phone in a long time. My name is Jessica Yala Jackson. I'm actually from Puerto Rico, but I've been here since '96. So I've been here 20, almost 25 years. I graduated from York College with a bachelor's degree in communications. I also have PA real estate license. I have four kids in the district in Indian Rock, Valley View, York High, I mean, York Suburban, and the middle school. So I can tell you everything from the beginning to the end. Right now, I'm bilingual, Spanish. The reason I decided to do this is because I believe we need some diversity. As you can see, there's a lot of different kids coming from the district. And there's a reason why. The school is great. I agree on a couple of things that the school does, very good at it. And that's why we moved from the city seven years ago to York Suburban. Although I have two kids that I decided to pull out for cyber school because some issues that need to be addressed, but I get into that later. And, but, you know, I'm here to make a difference. That's the big reason why I decided to jump in.
Robinson, would you like to?
Good evening. Question one. How would you rate the school district? Why? And what would you do to improve it?
Well, the district is great. The couple of things that I would like to see improved in the seven years I've been in the district, like for special education, there's some work to be done, and for gifted kids, there's some work to be done. In my experience personally, I have two kids in special education, and there was nothing in the school district to help them get better. If anything, they just went backwards. That's why I decided to take them home this year, to see how, you know, we can improve, to see if I can help them one-on-one with the cyber school. And they do, they improving their reading, they improving their confidence, which is fantastic. But they do want to be in school. They want to be with their peers. They want to be with their friends. So we tend to, we want to see how they do, but I think the district has to improve on that part. How would you improve that? I would think teachers are the number-one people that we should go after and talk to them. They see the kids every day. They know the student better than anybody. And then the counselor can be a part of it, of course. A psychiatrist can be part of it, of course. But I think we always have to start with the teacher. They know more than anyone. And I always have trouble when they don't count on them. I used to be a bilingual teacher assistant in the York City School, and the teachers were never the first one to ask for. And they used to look at me like, "Well, this is what happens." I wanted to be a teacher, but after that, I said, "I don't want to do this if I don't have any say." I like to, they work so hard, and they don't have any say on the matter. So I think that we should go that first.
Number two. Please briefly describe for us the process you use to make a difficult decision.
Well, as a business owner, I have my own store. I'm also a property management for my own properties in DAS. So in properties with my husband, he's in the military, so I'm always making hard decisions. I have a teenager, so every time I got to make a big decision, we get, we look at the facts, we look at the problems, we look, how can we do better? Why is this happening? How can we improve? We look at our resources and ask questions if we don't know the answer. Look outside the box and see how can we improve it and move forward with the matters that needs to be improved. What's good, don't touch it. What's bad, let's see how we can focus on this and get it done.
Number three. Have you ever attended a school board meeting, and what prompted your interest in seeking the seat on the board now as opposed to during the general election?
I've been in the board meetings before, and the reason I decided to do this now is because I see a need for not just my children, but other people's children that I have talked to, all the parents. I also see a need of diversity. You can see, you know, black, Latina, woman. I have my own businesses. I'm, you know, I'm educated. And I think there's, we need to be out there to see we can back up, not back up like, help move forward, help the kids that are coming in, help the parents that are coming in that they're trying to see, can I identify with these people in this place? Can I, can they hear me? Because if you don't have no one to represent them, they don't want to move forward. They don't want to move, you know, they don't want to, they don't want to talk about it. I have students from DAS, from the diversity groups. They say they don't, they don't see me because I don't see anybody looking at, like me. But I think I can put a lot, a lot of effort to make that happen, to change not the culture, but to see, we're changing. So there's no way around it. We're changing, and people need to come on board. And I want people to be more open-minded to open that gap that is happening right now.
If you were selected to fill this position, would it be your intention to seek elected office in two years?
Yes.
How would you describe the culture of York Suburban?
There's one thing I love about Suburban is they're very, they're very into, you know, the spirit. They, my kids love the Spirit Day. They love participating. They love all the events that happens in York Suburban. My kids, even though they're cyber school, they started doing their football team, they're in the football team right now. And they love how connected they are. They want to be part of it. So I would love to see improvement on the special education. They gift their kids to have, to bring more help for the kids that need that help. Because they're good with the average kids, but then we need improvement with those kind of kids.
"School districts are challenged with a mission of providing the highest quality education and supporting our faculty and administration while protecting our taxpayers from undue burdens. Over the past several years, the state has been less than a useful partner in this process. As a new board member, what steps would you consider to ensure that the district meets this mission?"
Well, I would start asking for grants. I know a couple of people in the, in other areas of York that they look for grants for, you know, to make, so we don't have to pay more taxes. We don't want that. So we want to find a way to do that. I think grants could be a possibility. And fundraisers in a different way. I know we do a lot of fundraisers, but there's other ways to make the money a little bit faster because going to eat or the giant car and all that stuff is just kind of old. I think we can do better with that and make the money a little bit faster.
Recent data from the Pennsylvania Youth Survey suggests significant numbers of York Suburban students are prone to increasing levels of stress and incidence of depression. Over the past three years, two students in the district have taken their own lives. How do you think the board should address this evidence?
Well, I know it is a tough, a tough one for a lot of people, for everyone here. We should look at, we should, again, we should talk to the teachers. We should, we should be involved to see how her kids are doing, you know, they're her, they're kids. So we should see what kid is having trouble. Look at their grade. Why are their grades so low? Why do they don't want to come to school? Once you get that, you get, identify the kids first that way, then you can get the counselor to get involved. You get the psychologist to get involved. Then you get the parents to get involved. Because sometimes kids come here, this is their safe place. If they go, not everyone has good parents, unfortunately. If you don't, if you go home, no one's helping. If you come here, no one's helping you, they're not going to talk. But if you get, if the teacher can identify the student, then they can move to the counselor and the psychiatrist. We get a group, see what their parents are at, see what they're doing. This is them. Follow-up. It's all about following up and not just put on the rug. We got to see the real issue before detention, suspension, because that's going to help. So that's the way I would address it. Go there first.
Closing statement.
Well, as you can see, I'm here to put some diversity. I'm bilingual. I have experience with kids. I have four kids in the district. I'm not going anywhere. So we've been here for, I've been here for seven years, and I would do my best of my abilities to make something happen, especially with the special education kids and gifted kids. And this bully needs to stop. And I think we need to get in it because too many events doesn't help. We have to put the time and the... we have to put the time and the effort and the action to make it happen, and that's it.
Thank you. Mr. Wong.
Good evening, I'm Steve Wong, eleven hundred Grant A. Road, my wife and I have lived here in the district for twenty-three years, we've raised our children here, our oldest son went K through seven here, and then we came over to York Country Day, our twin came along and went through K through twelve, and they're seniors this year, going through senior mode, pushed the button on the application, we did that this weekend, so, but York Suburban for us, we chose our house to make sure it was in the Indian Rock school district before we had children, and so, we, her experience in the school district has been very, very good, and we can see little things along the way, and our children have got a chance to, our twins got all-day kindergarten, only because our daughter vapor locked and did do well on the test, but we wanted all-day kindergarten for our children, and we were very, very lucky, but all of our experiences have been good, in terms of the school district, it's not just the students, it's not just the teachers, it's administration, it's the inclusion of the parents, it's the extracurricular activity and the spirit and the energy that the school district can put together, and so, I have been in business for forty years more or less, and as of a year and a half ago, sold my last business, and technically April retired, now I don't believe in retirement, I believe in finding better things to do, and I was approached by a few people a year and a half ago, said, why don't you run for school board, and I'm, no, 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 I just think that's the good people, I've met some of you here on the board, you probably didn't know that, but, and I know other people have been actively in the school district, and I felt very good for this board, but I was, this opening came up again, hey, here's, the door opened, okay, here's my opportunity to get back to community and work, and I have the time to do so, but what I would probably bring to the board would be a good oversight of the financials and some of the hard decisions and some of the revenue and cost structures, I told my wife that I've lived half my career in negative cash flow, break-even cash flow, and God, we made positive cash flow, but in a school district here, living that every day in a very tight budget, difficult revenues. What I would also bring would be also looking at perspectives of technology and people, and I've seen the school district do a lot online, a lot of different things that are enhancing the quality of my children's education, whether it be study island or infinite campus and other things of that nature. The other factor, this is kind of unusual, I've spent forty years in the H V A C business, and I just saw on your budgets, you're spending millions of dollars on that, where you're going to have consultants and confusion and comfort and everything else, ironically, I know everything you need to know about that industry, but I, you know, I can give benefit and a major cost structure, so in the end, at the end of the day, you got to keep the schools comfortable and a good working environment, quality air, and do it at the lowest possible cost, and that's not easy either, so I'm very untrained in the field, and last, what I would bring would be a passion, I have a passion for education, I was the first to go to college, in any of my family, my grandfather had eighth-grade education, my father left high school and went straight into Marines, served in Korea, they came back and went to these trade schools and went on to some higher technology things, but what I see in the world is being an employer, hiring, whether it be an accountant or a factory worker or welder, engineers and administrative assistants, and we have to prepare our kids for the future, and give them a toolbox and encouragement to take that next step beyond, so I believe that I can maybe bring some of that passion, because I am a big believer in preschool and kindergarten, and challenging kids and the activities and measuring metrics, challenging the school district to have metrics, how are we doing, are all the kids participating in the sport, are they in the school flag, are they doing this in addition to the fundamentals that they need to accomplish, so I'm thrilled to be here and I appreciate the time.
Thank you. Ms. Ferrari.
We'll start again, okay, how would you rate the school district, why, and what would you do to improve it?
I would rate the school district an eight out of ten, I'm asking why, I'm not quite sure, I think there's rooms for improvement in some areas that I've seen, there's maybe some weaknesses, compared to other school districts I've seen, there's some room for enhancement, and some is revenue-driven, some is teacher and resource-driven, for example, give you an example, my oldest boy, what we put in the country now, he was on the robotics team, this county should have ten or fifteen robotics teams, but it's not up and coming, but they got, you know, model U N and other types of things for the kids to participate, so I'm a big believer in not only the classroom, but also the other extracurricular.
Please describe for us the process you use to make some difficult decisions, I think you've alluded to this a little bit.
Well, as a businessperson, you're confronted with them every day, but normally you try to give them the right information in front of them, push the staff to look at the alternatives and the cost structure, and sort out the things when you object it, send it to time frame, but sometimes it's not easy, the position of school board is never going to be perfect.
Have you ever attended a school board meeting, and what prompted your interest in seeking a seat on the board at this time as opposed to during the general election?
I've never been to a school, I knew a few people, I watched the numbers, I watched, I read, I paid attention, I thought things were going pretty good, there's one exception, several years ago, I did get actively involved, and some of us formed a committee and did several things that helped double or triple the turnout for the election, so I was in the back room, but why now, because I have the time, I have the energy, I have maybe something to give, rather than go chase high technology or other things.
If you were selected to fill this position, would it be your intention to seek elected office in two years?
I would like to say, oh, let's take a look at this, but I think once I commit to something like this, you have to follow through and continue to follow through, and answer the problem, yes, most likely.
Again, you've touched on this a little bit, describe the culture of Y S.
I've seen from the parents and kids' perspective, a lot of energy, a lot of excitement and a lot of inclusiveness, I think culturally, the school might be slipping a little bit in the academic area, but that may be part of the demographics as well, but at the same time, as a culture, I've seen a lot of things in terms of our kids growing up, that has been very positive for us, and the one I want to talk about is, you know, no smoking, smoking is bad for you, well, who smokes bad, bad people, so, you know, those type of programs at third grade made a difference, and I know our children are with a smoking syndrome and vaping and things like that.
School districts are challenged with a mission of providing the highest possible quality education to our students and supporting our faculty and administration while protecting our taxpayers from undue burdens. Over the past several years, the state has been less than a useful partner in this process. As a new board member, what steps would you consider to ensure that the district meets this mission?
I agree with that statement one hundred and eighty percent, I think we get all the school districts around the capital with the school budget, we don't really go home, until we reformulate the allocations, I think it's an undue burden to put heavy burdens on the school taxes when there's other means and things that can happen, so as a school board member, I would not only just work at trying to make sure the revenue is balancing and try to come in, but also work outside the district to change the culture in Harrisburg. My father lives in Mesquite Texas, and when he turned sixty-five, his taxes froze, now, that's a crazy idea to state that's paying, but it could be done if someone only had the guts to do it, and that would change the composition here in the revenue streams, and shift it away from a burden on property taxes, I'm not in favor of eliminating property taxes, but it's going to be a better balance, especially a better balance for the school district, so I'd be willing to, one more, help with putting coalitions and people together to push those things, it may take five years, ten years, twenty years, but there has to be an improvement, yeah.
Recent data from the Pennsylvania Youth Survey suggests significant numbers of York Suburban students are prone to increasing levels of stress and incidents of depression. Over the past few years, two students of the district have taken their own lives. How do you think the board should address this evidence?
I think you have some basic pieces in place now on wellness, wellness teams and committees and so forth, I think there's probably programs that can be merged and put in place that can get a bit of change, because it's not just wellness and suicide, it's, it's done violence issues and all kinds of related, you have the vaping thing coming up now, so I think you have to look at it and push, work with the administration to come up with programs or elsewhere, that might also work, and I can say that because the school district, I graduated from, which is a little town called Plano, Texas, which is a huge town, my graduate class was four hundred, my brother, five years later, was a thousand, so, try to get the revenues to happen, but that was, but then that school district, twenty years later, had the highest ten-year student subgrading in the country, all middle or middle class, so, yeah, I think there's things we have to look for too, and mental health is important.
Would you like to make a closing statement and share anything else with us?
No, I really appreciate the opportunity, I never thought I'd be standing here, I like, I like my free time these days, I can almost do what I want to do, but seriously, I have time and ideas to get, and think I could work with everyone here and administration and parents as well, and hopefully make a difference.
Thank you very much for being here this evening.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Mr. Krantz.
Good evening, my name's David Krantz, I'm new to this district three years ago, for the sole purpose of getting my son to go to better school, I came from Woodline School, it's not really adequate, it's not adequate as far as like the future, so, in that process of moving here, I had two more children, so, I'm having twins, so I'm going to be in York Suburban for the next eighteen, twenty years as a father and a parent.
Trapped.
My background is I am a teacher, so I work for B T S, Baltimore County Public Schools, my sixth year, I have a bachelor's in science and art education, and that's what I do out there, I'm a semester shy of getting my master's in administration and special education, so I have a firm understanding of the underworkings of how the school district does operate, so this is my passion, and it's my plan to go into leadership myself, be an administrator, so I have a love for education and I have a love for kids, I just don't want to leave the classroom because I have a very strong reputation with my kids as far as like being a teacher, he does understand, so I echo a lot of what's been said tonight, because I live every day, so, that is my sole purpose of being here, my son did a middle school at York Suburban, and he went to Indian Rock as well, so I'd like to positively influence change and move forward and keep this district the best it can be.
All right, how would you rate the school district, why, and what would you do to improve it?
I'd give it an A based on the data that I've seen, as far as proficiency in mathematics and E L A, as far as the ending graduation rates as well, it's at the top of the county for a reason, I always have an A-plus rating as far as grading, and that's why I live here, as far as what I would do to improve it, I would be focusing on achievement gaps, and making sure that we are catching some of the problems that, that goes into the last question, as far as like why we see stress levels in students, because they're not making the grade, because there's something going on.
All right, briefly describe for us the process you use to make difficult decisions.
I use evidence-based decisions, you have to look at what your outcome is, you have to look at what your problem is, and what is the equitable solution, so, it factor everything in and make sure that you're in case for this building, for this district, for the president, so.
Have you ever attended a school board meeting, and what prompted your interest in seeking a seat on the board now as opposed to during the general election?
I've never attended a school board meeting in this district, I've attended plenty in Baltimore County, as far as pushing good decisions that affected positive outcomes for teachers, the reason I'm here tonight is because there was an opening, and I jumped at this opportunity because this is my passion, so, I thought if I could make a difference in my own son's schools, I'd be fantastic, the eighteen years that I could work to make things better for them.
If you were selected to fill this position, would it be your intention to seek elected office in two years?
Absolutely, absolutely, with a lot.
How would you describe the culture of Y S?
I would say it's a strong academic push, I'd say that there's definitely rigor in the schools, I see that the teachers are extremely accountable as far as posting grades immediately, they are very effective in holding the students accountable as well, I see a strong sense of discipline that is not present in certain places that I've worked, and even currently, and I see a complete difference in my son's middle school, where I try to echo those same thoughts in my own middle school, I've met with like a lot of liberation, so, if they can do it in Pennsylvania, in a smaller setting, there's no reason that we can't be doing this well, so, I think it's a model school.
School districts are challenged with a mission of providing the highest possible quality education to our students and supporting our faculty and administration while protecting our taxpayers from undue burdens. Over the past several years, the state has been a less than useful partner in this process. As a new board member, what steps would you consider to ensure that the district meets this mission?
I know it's not a popular answer, but I think more pressure needs to be put towards Harrisburg to make policies that make sense for school districts, when like a district like this is probably getting ninety percent of its tax base from the local community. Also, grants, I saw that Suburban did get the Ready to Learn grant, but it was substantially lower than Red Lines in Dallas towns by hundreds of thousands of dollars, and I didn't know if that was due to our student enrollment, large size of the district, but I was like, I was wondering if we could pull more from things like that, so, there's opportunities out there, and I know that everybody's busy trying to do a great job, but I think that's some more fresh perspective.
Recent data from the Pennsylvania Youth Survey suggests significant numbers of York Suburban students are prone to increasing levels of stress and incidents of depression. Over the past three years, two students of the district have taken their own lives. How do you think the board should address this evidence?
Well, I think this starts a lot of places, and it starts especially young, in elementary schools, I'm sure that you guys have anti-bullying programs anyplace, but also teaching empathy, accountability, and closing those achievement gaps is what needs to happen, you can be finding out why kids are not excelling and addressing it immediately, whether that's through social workers within the schools that provide that position, to catch kids that are falling through, or you have ramp up to counseling, but just, you know, a happy kid is a kid that's doing well in school, and kids that aren't doing well are not happy, and that's where you lead to a lot of those things, and a teacher can't always deal with everything in the classroom by themselves, and it needs to be like a community effort from the board down to the teachers, the administrators, having programs in place that are immediately catching this and preventing it, because a lot of kids are stressed, this is all over the country, we're dealing with a social situation where there's a lot of stress kick, and they don't have a whole lot of outlets, and a lot of it's from social pressure, but the one gentleman was right, they spend a lot of day, their day with us, okay, sometimes we are the only positive portion of their week, so, you got to start young, you got to start in elementary schools, that way you build a culture of respect, and then that they take that all the way to high school.
All right, do you have a closing statement you'd like to make?
I also serve on a winter board council as well, a town council, a local official, and you have a understanding, you're dealing with a high capacity budget, I don't know if you call it Suburban, but, but understanding of decision-making processes as far as that's concerned, so, I do bring a little bit of board experience, you know, of six years.
Thank you. Mr. Sullivan.
Good evening, everyone, Steve Sullivan, three thirty-one Pine Hill Lane, I certainly appreciate the opportunity to make a brief statement, and you knew that we were here, some folks that I knew, and some folks I think I want to get to know better, my formal training is in economics, I currently work as a federal research and technical assistance contractor, which means that I work, I consult mostly with federal grantees on how to improve programs that benefit the nation's most vulnerable communities, individuals and families who are experiencing homelessness, persons with mental health or substance use disorders, just as involved persons, and I help those programs look at their own data to improve, to improve performance, and I help the federal government determine how to tell the programs to be effective. And I help the federal government determine how to tell the programs to adapt. More to the point, I am a 13-year resident of the district with two children in the high school and one in the middle school. And I am grateful beyond words for the environment that this school district has provided for my three very different learners to grow not just academically, but socially and artistically and as responsible participants in civil society. And I would very much like to do what I can to secure that same set of successes for every family in the district and all future residents of the district by listening to and representing other district residents, by watching and learning from other board members and from bringing to bear where appropriate my background in research and budgeting and planning and grant writing. So thank you for your, for your consideration.
Three years.
Okay, Steve, how would you rate the school district? Why and what would you do to improve it?
I'd rate the district very highly, but I would note, as others have noted, that there's always room for improvement. We've, as I said, we've got a senior this year plus a freshman and an eighth grader and we're, we're 13-year residents, so we've seen how the district addresses the needs of learners from kindergarten to college counseling. And when we left DC to come here, we chose to live here on the strength of the academic performance of York suburban and it is still very much the district that it was when we chose to live here in the first place. And there's a blizzard of national surveys and statistics and everybody knows the rankings and they bounce around a little bit, but everybody knows the tops of the list that York suburban has been on. We have found the teachers generally excellent. We've found the building administrators to be professional, to be responsive. And the very small number of times that we have had a concern that district level administrators needed to address, they have done so immediately and they have done so thoroughly. We have been happy with decisions, large and small, teacher assignments, placement decisions. We have observed a lot of very, very heartening and fruitful collaboration among administrators and counselors and teachers. And it's a well-functioning ecosystem here and so we're happy to see that. There have been lots of opportunities for our kids not just to be involved in sports or music or theater. And I've been particularly impressed by the number of students who do both sports and musical arts because my own high school experience, that was impossible when I was a student. That was, it was actually culturally actively discouraged for students to be involved in both in music and athletics. And so I think we've accomplished something really extraordinary here. And also for parents to be involved in supporting P T O, P S O, Y C F, C T C. And I think the board, which I've observed for some time now, has been very responsibly and constructively engaged in very difficult at times conversations about fundings and facilities and security and communications and has modeled excellent behavior for all of the students. But in terms of improvements, I suppose I'm principally concerned about a couple of things. Meeting the ongoing behavioral health needs of students, given the results in the P A S survey that is addressed in one of the other questions. And sustaining or increasing the level of parental involvement across all the buildings over time and supportive roles that are either formally represented in P T Os, P S Os, membership or in other auxiliary organizations. I think that we'll, I'll foreshorten my comments on the P A S because I want to talk about that and more in a little bit, but there are very serious numbers in the P A S, not just the ones that you referenced, the mental health concerns that tie not just to bad outcomes, but as referenced in the question, the very worst outcomes you can have. There are also, there were troubling things on every, on every page of that report and having been on the part of the C T C committee that tried to boil those down for presentations of board, there were a lot of different things to potentially be concerned about that. And I, I want to see the community take greater ownership of that report and reports like that coming forward. But in terms of the second concern that I have, and these are impressionistic data of mine, but I've been in many, many of these meetings in the past with P S Os and P T Os. I think the P T Os or P S Os go from 20 to 30 parents regularly attending meetings to some of these organizations struggling to fill out a leadership roster in a given year. That cannot point to good outcomes over time. I don't know, I don't have enough data to know whether that is a hard trend or not, but a trend of parental disengagement can't, can't point to good results for students. And I know that it's not entirely within the scope of the school board to try to address that. But communication and collaboration with the building administrators, P T O, P S O leadership, and I know that goes on, might identify ways to better communicate to incoming parents that there is an expectation of a level of parental involvement in the classroom and in the schools that is going to result in better outcomes for kids. So that's it for that.
Okay. Please briefly describe for us the process you use to make difficult decisions.
Clarify the objective, particularly if other people are involved in making decisions. That's one of the areas where we fall down typically as we're talking past from another about what it is that we want to accomplish. Gather all the available data, assess the data for quality, try to identify whatever assumptions are being made, either implicit or explicit assumptions. Try to identify what the most likely positive and negative outcomes are. Don't shy away from the fact that there are sometimes negative consequences to what are intended to be positive moves. And then to engage with and listen to as many people of widely varying perspectives as possible because other people know things that you don't.
Okay. Have you ever attended a school board meeting and what prompted your interest in seeking a seat on the board now as opposed to during the general election?
I have, I went back and looked at this and I have attended numerous board meetings over the last 10 to 12 years, including a committee meeting or two relating to facility plans, teacher pay, curriculum, music department personnel, and most recently communications. So I'm sure I have thoroughly annoyed all of you at one time or another over the last 16 years. I have also been part of at least one C T C group that presented the P A S data last year. I admit that I struggled with the second part of that question. I didn't make a conscious decision not to run. I'm sure that I was up to my neck in bringing up applications at the time and just wasn't looking for that ones.
You're selected to fill this position, would it be your intention to seek elected office in two years?
I anticipate that I would, but that would depend entirely upon whether I felt I were performing the data, performing the job up to my expectations.
Okay. How would you describe the culture of York suburban?
I've seen a lot of organizations put up mission and vision statements and then fail miserably to live up to them. But I think the organization, the, the, the school district as a whole, saying that it's a culture of excellence and a community of encouragement is really genuinely trying to live up to that every day. From, from individual curricular things that we have observed with, as I said, our, our three learners, from, I'll use two examples, kid writing. I know kid writing's not part of the curriculum anymore, but something that is really explicitly designed to remove obstacles to being an effective writer later on. And the way the kid writing approach encourages kids to just keep, just write, just get it out, just put it on, put it on the paper. And then also what's gone on in the music and arts departments, and I know that he's not around anymore either, but the way Jim Middle worked with improvisation with the elementary kids has opened up for so many of those kids, the opportunity to realize that they can do things artistically that might have been closed off in the before if they didn't have that approach to learning. So it sets, the district sets significant expectations for student performance, for teacher performance. I know that we've made significant financial commitments to bring in the best teachers available. There's an expectation of good performance, but, but in general, the notion of striving for excellence and trying to encourage students where we can is, is there, is being lived.
Okay. School districts are challenged with a mission of providing the highest possible quality education to our students and supporting our faculty and administration while protecting our taxpayers from undue burdens. Over the past several years, the state has been less than a useful partner in this process. As a new board member, what steps would you consider to ensure that the district meets the mission?
I think what I will say here is consonant with what you've heard from a lot of other folks, which is we've got to get Harrisburg's attention as to the trade-offs that school districts are being put in a position of making because of some of their, I think, poorly thought out funding decisions. One of the things that I know that I don't know about, although I have, I've attended school board meetings, I know where there have been reports out from the various committees that interface with, with P S B A. I know the school board works with P S B A representatives and P S B A folks around Harrisburg trying to get legislators to do the right thing in terms of budgets, but I haven't observed that at first. So I think working through P S B A and as others have said, looking for federal grants. There, there is, I'm attuned to grant opportunities all the time because my wife and I are both parent writers. And there are, for example, there's a growing application deadline for Robert Wood Johnson Foundation Culture of Health for which school districts are eligible. So it's millions of dollars in multi-year money. So I think that we need to be looking for opportunities. As others have said, I have a grant funding opportunity for school.
Okay. And finally, recent data from the Pennsylvania Youth Survey suggests significant numbers of York suburban students are prone to increasing levels of stress and incidents of depression. Over the past three years, two students of the district have taken their own lives. How do you think the board should address this evidence?
So there's a lot that we know from the P A S. There's a lot more we could get from the P A S if we had access to individual level de-identified data from the P A S because all we get are the top line numbers. We can't really cross tabulate things against one another. So we don't know, for example, although it's hiding in the data somewhere, whether the students who are reporting these stress levels are also the students who are reporting housing instability, food insecurity, family instability. We don't know the degree of correlation among those things where if we had individual de-identified individual level data, we could figure some of those things out. I think that the district also needs to work with the counselors who are here, with the contracted behavioral health provider, with the many clinicians who are York suburban parents to put together a supplementary data collection instrument that would attempt to determine some of the specific stressors that are leading to these yes responses to depressed one or more days in the last, or most days in the last 12 months, feeling worthless, that those sorts of things. We don't know why students are responding to what they are to those questions. And I think that we need to dig further in order to find out whether those are unrealistic expectations by school personnel, whether those are unrealistic expectations in the home, whether those are inappropriate norming that we do against our peers through the filter of social media where we only receive the good things that people put on, you know, we only receive people's successes reported on Facebook and Twitter and things like that. So I think there are things that we can, that we can do and I think that we need a round table involving both our excellent counseling and social work staff here, the contractor that has been provided for behavioral health supports in the district, and then other clinicians in the area who may be serving York suburban students to talk about not individual cases, but the things that they are hearing from the students to perform that sort of listening function so that we can get a better sense of what specifically is causing those levels of stress.
Would you like to make a closing statement?
Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak and so mean to all of you and to look for your leverage.
Ms. Mittens, how did you know you were next?
Hi, everyone. I'm Jennifer McTone. I'm a parent of two students in the district, one in middle school, one in high school. I live in Harrisburg Township for the last 10 years. I've never run to the hospital before, which is a little bit scary, I'm sure, for everyone here, but this is a really important position and it's got a lot of responsibility. And I saw the email come through and I think sometimes we always need to step up and represent our community and do the public service, even, even though it's scary, even though it's a big incident, we just need to take that step. So a little bit about me, I've got, just let me do it here, 20 years' experience in management in a wide variety of fields. The thing that makes me really comfortable, talking and working with people and making hard decisions. I also have worked for other school districts within the county in a variety of positions, both as an employee and as a consultant. So the culmination of my employment really gives me a unique opportunity to be able to represent all of the people you're supposed to represent. As a resident, I'm concerned about the financing of the budget. As a parent, I'm concerned about the educational goals and making sure that every student reaches their best goal, no matter what that might look like. And as someone who has worked within buildings and sees how the schools function and the supports that teachers need, I see how the decisions boards and administrators make really have an impact on how effectively the front line can, can effectively do their job. And we need people who can provide all of those different inputs to be able to best balance what our decisions have to be. In my own career, I'm a behavior analyst. I observe, listen, problem solve and teach others how to best help reach client goals for clients and families, behavioral, and work with children with special, special needs. I really strongly believe that one person can make a huge difference, but when we collaborate and we work with families and we come to these goals and, and plans together, you get better outcomes. And the same kind of concept has to go on here in a board. We can make a decision, but if nobody's going to follow through on it or if everybody's fighting about it, it's not going to be as effective. We need to find a way to collaborate and come together on things for the best outcomes for everybody. Finally, I'm also involved in a volunteer organization that's working with representatives up in Harrisburg to create better access to better treatment for kids and individuals across Pennsylvania. So I've spent the last six months meeting with state representatives, talking to them about a proposed legislation, really getting in there, answering phone calls, helping to get the word out on social media and really push to make legislative change in order to get better outcomes for Pennsylvania. That same kind of approach can also help here, as I'll talk about during one of our later questions. But this, that whole experience has really given me a lot of insight into the factors that elected officials have to try to balance. We come in with this one idea of thinking, this is going to be easy. Who would say no to this? And then they have all of these other things that sound like, well, I also have to think about this, and this, and this, and this. And really being able to answer their questions and come back and think about it has given me a lot of insight into what they have to balance and address regularly. So I, I think my variety of experiences could be a benefit to the Bay County District, so that's going to be it.
Sanders.
All right. Here we go. How would you rate the school district? Why and what would you do to improve it?
Four point five stars. I think it's a great district. My kids are in middle school and high school. We've been here through the whole district. We chose this district when we moved into it 10 years ago. It's a really solid educational push for things. The teachers, staff, administration, administration building-wise have been phenomenal in response to our, our questions and needs along the way, which is fantastic. Our district has a reputation as being elite within York County. I think an area we can improve is some outside the box thinking. It's hard. The world is changing and it's changing fast. And our responsiveness to those changes with regards to technology, mental health and a lot of other areas, we have to not be stagnant in our thinking in order to think, well, this has worked for us for so long. That so long is quickly ending. We need to make sure we're staying on top of these things and not getting behind and just be willing to think outside the box and look at the new ideas so that we don't see that decline moving forward, both educationally and with our mental and physical health of our student body and our staff.
Okay. Tell us about the process you use to make difficult decisions.
I'm a big fan of research and lists. I love spreadsheets. I think if I don't know about something, I go and research it because how can you do anything without some more information? Ask somebody else, go to the research, go to the evidence, see what things have worked in the past, make lists, figure out what steps you would need to reach those outcomes and then how can you manage the environment to best achieve each of those steps? Because it's not just enough to have this goal that you want to reach if you aren't able to manage all the steps needed to get there. So I do a lot of research, ask other people that know more, work together and put it on a spreadsheet if I need to.
Have you ever attended a school board meeting and what prompted your interest in seeking And what prompted your interest in seeking a seat on the board now as opposed to during the general election?
I have not actually attended a school board meeting. I have reviewed the notes and looked up at some things online when there were areas of interest to me that I wanted to hear more about, or the PDFs, and I've gone through those. But I didn't have any concerns that needed an urgent school board review at any point thus far, which I think is pretty awesome. They've usually all been addressed at building level, and I never needed higher-level support to get anything done. What prompted it now? Honestly, my children were young, and I've actually thought about going for the school board before, but the time commitment would have been too much when you've got young kids. They're older now, and I think I'm in a place where I can provide something useful. And when the email came through, some of the hesitancy of running for public office is reduced when we only have to talk to you guys and not put forth a full campaign. And to answer the question for later, yes, I would pursue running in the future as long as I felt that I was able to actively contribute, that my services here were valued and worthy, and that I was making a difference, and that it was a worthwhile collaboration of ideas and meetings, then I would gladly pursue continuing.
Tell us about the culture of Y.S.
I think the culture of Y.S. is pride. As everybody else has mentioned, that strong camaraderie, there really is that orange-and-black day. I think there's been a lot of effort to really come together as a district. We're proud of what goes on here at York Suburban, and we should be because there's a lot of great things happening here, but we also need to make sure that that pride doesn't turn into arrogance or a lack of ability to see some other bigger pictures that are going on there. But I think Y.S.'s pride is a great slogan for us because it is. It's a place we want to be part of.
Okay. School districts are challenged with a mission of providing the highest possible quality education to our students and supporting our faculty and administration while protecting our taxpayers from undue burdens. Over the past several years, the state has been a less-than-useful partner in this process. As a new board member, what steps would you consider to ensure that the district meets this mission?
As a new board member, the first thing I would do is check to see what everybody else has already done because I'm not going to reinvent the wheel. But after that, everything that the others have said is on my list here. First, I would take a look at our strengths and financial gaps or weaknesses, any weaknesses. I'd look at, is there anything within our budget that we can flex around or change? Then pursuing alternate funding sources. There's grant money out there to be had, and we have to look for it. And see if there's, do we have a committee that's doing grant writing? Do we have, I mean, teachers have a lot on their plate. They don't always have time to write huge amounts of grants, but there's a lot of help that could be given at teacher level, at building level, and at district level for grants. Evaluating the building layout and space. I know this is a big looming project here as to building restructuring and what's the most effective use of our space, of our facilities, of HVAC, of all of the different things needs to be evaluated to find the best and most efficient solution. And then writing and talking to legislators. It is vital because what is their decision based on? If it's just on a persuasion or win, then we have a say in that. If it's based on something else, then we have to look at what we can do to change those numbers. We need to get people calling, get people talking, and get the numbers to change because without that, it throws everything else out.
Okay. Recent data from the Pennsylvania Youth Survey suggests significant numbers of York Suburban students are prone to increasing levels of stress and incidents of depression. Over the past three years, two students of the district have taken their own lives. How do you think the board should address this evidence?
Can you talk a little bit more about this because this is very, I'm passionate about? The environment and culture we create in our schools has a huge impact in mental health. And it's not a one-size-fits-all solution. There are certain protective factors such as having one adult that you can talk to about something. And that seems so simple, but that's something that has a known correlation to reduce risks of anxiety, drug use, suicide, depression. Just having one adult that you can talk to about something. And teachers are on the front lines, having to be that one person, which is fantastic. But we need support. We need to make these factors that reduce those risks known and communicate it so that we can bolster those. We need to start really talking about what are the risks? What are the factors that actually make a change? What does the evidence say about that, those correlations? Because we don't know what happens at home. We don't, we can't control what happens at home, but we can control the environment they're in here in the school. And when we start looking at that, programs like Link Crew that you guys have are fantastic. I love that. I think that support for freshmen coming into the high school is a fantastic idea. Can we expand that? Can we make variance on that for LGBTQ communities, for other kids who might also feel like they don't fit in, not just freshmen? Can we look at other demographics that might also need that same support and find ways to reach out to make sure that all the kids are seen and heard and not slipping through the cracks? So look at what's working. Look at what the evidence says. Look at what we can do to make change. And reach out to the resources you've already partnered with, the local community, mental health resources that you've already established connections with, and see what resources and help they can give. And finally, I really think we need to establish a multidisciplinary team to really address proactive and execution of mental health intervention. If you've already identified something, what are you now going to do? And it has to be individualized. A cookie-cutter program doesn't work for everyone. The challenges that an inner-city Baltimore school has are not the same as the challenges that a rural farming school has, are not the same that a York Suburban school has. And if we're addressing it with, here's what you do when you stop mental health, and we teach it this way in first grade, and this way in seventh grade, and this way in 10th grade, that doesn't, that doesn't reach everyone. That reaches 50% of the kids. Okay, well, what about the other 50%? We have to support the building-level psychologists and guidance counselors to create effective, independent programming that reaches our kids. Because if we aren't supporting them, none of this is going to work. We need to create teams that create programming that reaches our kids. And that takes time.
Okay. Would you like to make a closing statement?
Thank you very much for your time. I know you've got a lot of hard decisions to make here, and I appreciate you obviously being able to talk with me all today.
My name is Gilbert Smith. And almost 14 years ago, my family and I moved from Maryland to York. In the sense of finding a better location for our kids. During that time, we, most of that time, we focused on ourselves, most of our kids, our house, our marriage, our education. Three years ago, my wife and I sat down and we had a conversation about weighing how much we've received versus how much we've given back. And the scale was tipped considerably in the receiving. So we made a conscious decision to do whatever we had to do, get more involved in our community in order to tip the scales more evenly. So we accepted several positions in our church whereby we could help our community. We volunteered in the city with the life path industry. We fed the homeless, organized food drives, and even in our travels, we've developed an organization, a charitable organization, a small one, that focuses on the needs of school-aged kids, that, you know, the basic needs, backpacks, shoes, clothes, stuff like that, in our community as well as overseas. So as a result, when I saw this email that came out looking for an open, to open a position, this open position, I decided this would be the perfect opportunity to give back even more to my community, to the kids in our community, of which I contribute plenty.
All right, thank you. How would you rate the school district? Why? What would you do to improve it?
On a scale of one to 10, I would rate this school district as a nine. Before our kids joined this school district, we had them in a private school. And after a year or two, we, I gave them a test, a verbal test, to see exactly where they were academically. And they were sorely below where I expected them to be. So we did our research. Luckily, we were right in this perfect school district of York Suburban. And we got them into the middle school and then our seniors here at the high school. What I would do would get our kids more involved in our decision-making. After all, they are the ones whose lives we're trying to improve, their futures are what we're trying to brighten. So I would get our kids more involved in our decision-making. We have an explorable way of cutting through all the politics of things and giving you a straight answer whereby you can take it as gospel, as an honest answer from its side. And there, you know, I've noticed that kids, they have an innate ability to give good, sound answers to problems that we struggle with sometimes. So that's what I would say.
A please briefly discuss the process you use to make difficult decisions.
Well, being a supervisor, I've been a few years, I've always approached problems where data is key. The more data I can get in, the better decisions I can make. I, when it comes to an argument between two people or a misunderstanding, the more information you can get from both sides, the better decision you can make. And not just getting the information, but understanding where these, both sides are coming from. Because no two people interpret things the same. No two companies will have the same business model. There's always going to be that difference that you have to bridge that gap so that you can make a sound decision that would hopefully satisfy both sides.
Have you ever attended a school board meeting? And what prompted your interest in seeking a seat on the board now as opposed to during the general election?
Been to a couple of meetings. I'm usually the guy in the back sitting and listening and watching, not saying anything. That's been my MO for many years. But like I said, three years ago, we decided to change that, to be more outgoing, to be more involved, especially when it comes to decision-making for our kids. So that's basically where we are, just getting more involved in our community, sharing all the things that we've learned over the years, and hopefully making good decisions for our kids, that their future will be brighter.
If you were selected to fill this position, would it be your intention to seek elected office in two years?
For now, I can't say definitively whether I would or not. It would have to be an ongoing process where I assess where I am in the process, how useful I am, how much of an impact I'm making on this board. If it's, in a few months, I realize that I'm useless here, then election would not be a possibility. But it would be an ongoing process where I assess and reassess my value to the board.
How would you describe the culture of York Suburban?
The culture of York Suburban is one of diversity for me. My son has a lot of friends. He brings a lot of friends to our house. They all look different. They all have a unique ability to ruin my basement that I've worked with them for years to get just the way I like it. But I welcome them all, and I enjoy the diversity that the school has to offer. I like the way the teachers involve us in knowing where our kids are in their academic progress. Infinite campus, I can easily go on instead of taking my son's or daughter's word. I can see exactly where they are and know that they're not telling me the entire truth. Get them the help that they need in order to succeed. Just for that.
Okay. School districts are challenged with a mission of providing the highest possible quality education to our students and supporting our faculty and administration while protecting our taxpayers from undue burdens. Over the past several years, the state has been a less-than-useful partner in this process. As a new board member, what steps would you consider to ensure that the district meets this mission?
Well, I can, I think I can safely say that we all enjoy every year paying our taxes, our state taxes. We all enjoy that huge number that we see to pay our state taxes. I would be a constant reminder to the state of its obligation to our district. We pay our taxes so that we can get the help that we need in order to improve our communities, improve our schools, improve the things that we, our kids need in order to have the best performance possible to succeed. So I would be a constant reminder to the state of their obligation to us. And that, before I get too emotional about it.
Thank you. Recent data from the Pennsylvania Youth Survey suggests significant numbers of York Suburban students are prone to increasing levels of stress and incidents of depression. Over the past three years, two students of the district have taken their own lives. How do you think the board should address this evidence?
Well, as someone that's been in the medical field for almost 30 years, I've seen firsthand come face-to-face with kids that have either attempted to or succeeded in taking their own lives. And I can tell you, there's one, one constant in this entire process. There's always more questions than answers. The parents always are stunned to know that their kids are in a place where they would consider taking their own lives. So I wish I could give you a definite answer, a solid solution to the problem, but the list of issues that kids are faced with today is endless. With the advent of social media, bullying, bullying on social media, finances, the list goes on and on. The only true solution I can think of is if we know someone that's facing demons in their lives, we have to be that person that they can come to in order to talk to, in order to get the help that they need. And if by chance you're that person, you have to be willing to drop everything and focus solely on that person. That's it. My kids, I enjoy speaking to them. Sometimes they might not have the time, but I, we make the time. I enjoy the fact that my kids can come to me with anything. And I tell them they can come to me with anything. I never judge them. If I'm watching the news or a sports game, I love basketball. If it's in the middle of a free throw that lies the game, I will shut that television off and focus directly on my kid so that they can tell me what's bothering them. off and focus directly on my kid so that they can tell me what's bothering them. And I think that's the key, not just in your family, but in school as well, to, um, give the kids the attention and look for the signs that they, that they might be showing, that they might need that help, that, uh, that only you can probably give them. Thank you.
Okay, uh, do you have any closing remarks that you'd like to share?
Well, thank you so much for, uh, allowing me to come here and speak to you. Um, my focus in coming here is to, to give more than I'm actually receiving. So, it would be an honor to, to serve our communities if I'm ever elected to this role. Thank you.
Ms. Santoro?
Hi there. Hey, so, my name is Kelly Santoro. Um, I live at 1931 Garnet Road. I'm actually right across the street here. Uh, we moved into our Garnet Road house, actually, just a couple of months ago. It took us, we've lived in York Suburban for 15 years, but it took us five years to be able to find the house that we wanted because we were, like a lot of my peers have said, we wanted to stay here. Um, I have two daughters, Lola and Phoebe. They're both at Indian Rock right now and we've been in Yorkshire and East York. And they're involved in field hockey, they cheer for, actually just cheer in Stephanie. They cheer, they cheer. Um, I graduated from Millisburg University with a secondary ed English bachelor's and I have my master's in instructional technology and I'm continuing my master's in effective teaching right now. And I'm currently an instructional coach at Elizabeth Town High School, although most of my background is actually in urban ed. Uh, I spent a number of years at East Bay, William Penn High School in the city and then at Columbia Junior/Senior High School, uh, across the bridge. So, my reason for being here is because I deeply believe in education. It's my skill set and my background and I think that I can bring a lot to the team.
How would you rate the school district? Why? And what would you do to improve it?
Two would be awesome, somebody said two. Uh, no, I think the school district is incredible. I mean, and it's coming from a home of two teachers. My husband teaches, I teach, so we know what we're looking for when we walk into a district. And this district has so much of it. The academics are incredible, the athletics are incredible, the extracurriculars are incredible. I walk into my kids' elementary schools and there's high school kids there hanging out doing all kinds of different activities with the students. You don't see this in every district. That isn't necessarily the norm. So, we have some really incredible things happening here that are unique and different and interesting. Um, for us, I think, moving forward as a school district, we're looking now at that future-ready index that, um, are we preparing our kind of industry-based learning? Our students who are leaving our school district, they're not all going to college. And so, are we ready for the kids and are we preparing the kids who are not in headed in that direction?
Um, briefly describe the process you use to make difficult decisions.
So, I think difficult decisions can often be contentious decisions too. And for that reason, it's a seek first to kind of listen and understand so that parties feel like they've been heard. And then it's research-based from there. It's a lot of reading, it's a lot of talking to people who know better than I know, pulling in my skill sets, understand. And then my dad, who owns his own company, we used to sit around at dinner table every night and he tells all these stories from his day at work. And one of the pieces of advice he told me, and it's still the thing I do to this day, is sleep on it. You've got to step back and gain a little bit perspective and then go back to it.
Do you have attended a school board meeting? And what prompted your interest in seeking a seat now? And, uh, as opposed to running for election?
So, I've, I've been teaching for 16 years, so I've attended school board meetings in probably six to seven different districts on a fairly regular basis for a variety of reasons. Um, right for now, it's really just about, I've never run for an office for something before. I've never run for a position. So, I don't totally understand that process. And so, for the ability to kind of get my foot in the door, to learn from you and to understand the process and then move forward with it would be invaluable. And so, I took the opportunity.
Would it be your intention to run in two years?
It would. My intention though is, one, a service. And so, again, like a few of my peers have said, I want to make sure that I'm a service to you and that I'm a service to the community. I really believe in a goodness of fit. And so, if I'm not, that's okay. And there's a lot of wonderful people here that are more than willing to move into those types of positions and I understand that too.
Um, we've touched on this a little bit. How would you describe the culture at Y S?
I think we're proud, we're strong, we're caring. I love that we're becoming more diverse. And biggest of all is just that how family-oriented we are at the district. Um, I grew up around Philadelphia and so when family and friends come out to visit and they go to community events, the number one thing that they say to me over and over again is, this, your school is like schools used to be. It has that family feel to it that we don't get to see anymore. And I love that. We don't get that everywhere. And yes, we come here because the scores are amazing, but there's also that peace, that, that kind of intangible thing that we have, um, that you just, you, you can't easily duplicate.
Okay, moving toward keeping that, school districts are challenged with a mission of providing the highest possible quality education to our students and supporting our faculty and administration while protecting our taxpayers from undue burdens. Over the past several years, the state has been a less than useful partner in this process. As a new board member, what steps would you consider to ensure the district meets this mission?
So, this is an incredibly nuanced issue and we know that. It's not something that I can simply answer in a question. And I think, again, a lot of my peers here have said the same thing that I would say. Federal grants are important, reaching out to our legislators is important, we need to make sure we're building those relationships so that we can be heard too. And we have to look at taxes, we have to look at personnel, we have to look at grade level consolidation. Part of what makes this job so difficult is because we have to make tough decisions. And, um, that all goes into the issue of not having the money right now. Because yes, we want to petition to the legislature, yes, that's where we want to go. But next year, we've got to figure out what the, how the budget's going to work. And so, we've got to work right now with what we have to make that budget balance in the end.
Good. Recent data from the Pennsylvania Youth Survey suggests significant numbers of York Suburban students are prone to increasing levels of stress and incidence of depression. Over the past three years, two students have taken their own lives. How do you think the board should address this evidence?
So, it's important for us to realize first off that this isn't just a York Suburban issue, right? This is every school. I was talking to, um, my school district today, actually, we were in learning, uh, we were in, um, professional development today and trauma-informed learning. And we were talking about how last year we had 33 cases of referrals of suicidal ideation. So, like a kid who was about at the point that they, they came to somebody and said, "I think I want to kill myself." And we're at nine already this year. So, we're, we're targeting to potentially even double that number. Um, and that's a real issue for us. And I think one of the things that we've done, which I think has been really helpful, is that we've gone back to the idea, the concepts of social-emotional learning, which we tend to step away from a little bit. When we got really caught up in scores and testing, we forgot about, we still needed to make kids resilient and have grit. It was great if they can score advanced on a test. But we also need them to be able to go out and hold a job and handle the stressors of life. And we, we were missing some of that as teachers because we were a little too focused on some of the other stuff. So, the self-awareness, the self-management, uh, the social awareness and relationship skills, we're moving that back into the classroom and teaching those skills explicitly again to particularly our high school students who we sometimes tend to think, "Well, they got it in elementary school, they got it in the middle school." They've probably got it now. They don't got it. It's the most stressful point in their careers. So, the social-emotional learning, pulling that back in can have a really incredible impact on that, um, mental health and the mental health issues for the student.
Thank you. Would you like to close with a statement?
No, I mean, I feel like you guys have been here long enough. And you know I'm very thankful for this opportunity. So, I really appreciate this and it's been amazing to hear from just these people in my own district who, that love it as much as I do. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Smeltzer?
I'm Tracy Smeltzer, uh, a little bit at 3200 Bluewood Lane. Uh, like many others here, uh, I chose the school district before we had children. Uh, so, I've been, uh, in the school district for, for 25 years. I'm the parent of three recent graduates. Um, so, I've seen firsthand the value and the benefits of the York Suburban education. Uh, certainly what they've learned here has been instrumental in their success that they're, they're seeing now in college and beyond. Um, I've got, uh, over 30 experience in financial operations, uh, management experience, executive experience. And a, a lot of my career has been centered around, um, operational and process improvement, analysis and improvement. And so, that's an experience that I think, um, would be valuable i- in this type of position. Uh, in addition to my business background, I have a passion for serving my community, especially in child-centric organizations. Um, as an example, I served for five years on the executive board for York Little League and continue to serve, uh, for the South Central District Little League. Uh, in that capacity, obviously, I've worked with both parents and children. Uh, I also have access to a few resources that I think give me a, a good perspective and a good insight into, uh, some of the, the issues that we might encounter here. My wife is a professor at Penn State York and she sees the empire of high school graduates. And we, we often have conversations about what she's seeing, especially with the freshmen that are coming in. And we, you know, naturally because of, of our own, uh, experience, they compare to a suburban education. So, you know, we, we often have discussions, uh, surrounding that. In addition, my oldest daughter is a music teacher and middle school band director for a, uh, school district in Berks County. And she's not shy about, uh, discussing her frustrations as a secondary ed teacher and also the things that she enjoys. Uh, so, I get, uh, you know, some additional insight, uh, from her that I think would also be valuable. So, I, I would like to bring all of this background and experience to the board. I can think of no better way to serve the community or to serve children especially than to work to, help to make their experience from kindergarten through high school graduation the best that it can be.
Thank you. How would you rate the school district? Why? And what would you do to improve it?
Academically and in preparation for college, a solid A. We'll say a 9.5 on a scale of one to 10. Um, in, in terms of culture, I would say an eight. And my reasoning is, is this, I've, I've heard a lot of anecdotal evidence, uh, as I've mentioned, you know, maybe talking to my wife, uh, hearing how suburban, uh, kids, when they are in college are much better prepared, especially in terms of writing. Uh, so, academically, there's, there's no comparison. People here have certainly talked about, uh, and we're all well aware of the, the history of excellence here at Suburban, uh, and the, the many awards and accolades that we've received. In, in terms of culture, York Suburban certainly has a culture of pride. Uh, they also have a, a culture of competition, uh, which is not necessarily a bad thing. But there are some things that are lacking. Uh, for example, school support for students who may not have support at home or maybe have trouble with their executive skills. They may feel a little bit left out, uh, in terms of that culture of pride. Maybe they don't feel that same pride, um, as others. So, I think there are some things that, uh, we could do better in that way.
And, uh, how would you describe for us the process you use to make difficult decisions?
Well, ideally, before making a difficult decision, I want to gather as much information as possible. Sometimes that's not, based on time constraints, that may not be possible. Uh, you may need to make a decision much more quickly and you don't have time to gather all the information. Uh, in those times, in those situations, and even if I have been able to gather the information, I, I tend to rely on my experience. Uh, as we get older, we have more and more experiences and, uh, I, I find that you can almost always associate a given situation with a similar situation that you've dealt with before. And by looking back on it, it's almost like you have the benefit of hindsight. Uh, so, you can look at what were the negative outcomes and the positive outcomes of those experiences and apply those to the current situation.
Have you, um, ever attended a school board meeting? And what prompted your interest in seeking a seat on the board now as opposed to during the general election?
I haven't attended a meeting physically, but I have, uh, viewed, uh, several videos and read the minutes, uh, particularly if there was a topic that I was interested in that was being discussed. Um, in, in terms of the timing, it, it's only been this year that all of our kids are out, either in college or in the real world. And in addition, I recently started a new position myself while we're in working for Poe. So, I have a little more flexibility in terms of my time. Uh, so, the timing of, of this announcement just seemed to fit well.
And if you were selected to fill this position, would it be your intention to seek elected office in the two years?
Yes, I, I would look at this as a long-term commitment.
You talked a little bit about culture, but could you elaborate and describe, uh, your view of the culture of York Suburban?
Yes, as I said, uh, there is definitely a culture of pride. I, I've talked to students and parents in other districts and they say that it's different in that their students are not necessarily proud of where they go, whereas ours are. Their students don't have school cheers, they don't have a funky chicken dance. Uh, you know, there's, there's definitely a difference in, uh, the attitude and the pride that, that suburban schools, uh, students feel. That said, I, I think there is, I, I talked a little bit before about, uh, the competition and comparison. Competition is not a bad thing, but it can be taken too far. And I think there are times when underachieving or underperforming students may not be able to feel that same sense of pride because they feel that they're being compared to the best. And if they're struggling for whatever reason, whether that's the support at home or lack of support at home or, uh, lack of executive function skills or whatever it is, um, I, I think that makes them feel a little bit more alienated.
Um, school districts are challenged with a mission of providing the highest possible quality education to our students and supporting our faculty and administration while protecting our taxpayers from undue burdens. Over the past several years, the state has been less than a useful partner in this process. As a new board member, what steps would you consider to ensure that the district meets this mission?
If my career over the past 30 years has been with Vonton Stores. So, if you're familiar with the fate of Vonton Stores and, uh, the recent bankruptcy that we went through and, uh, really just with retail in general, um, I've got a lot of experience in doing more with less. Uh, that's something that we just simply had to do to continue to survive, uh, as long as we did. And so, some of that experience I would bring to the board and look at ways to reduce expenses, to streamline processes, um, things, there, there are areas where you can find, uh, cost savings, contracts can be renegotiated, there may be discounts that are available but aren't being taken. There, there are ways that you can find things like that. Beyond that, uh, then you have to start looking at programs and, uh, talking about how do we, how do we reduce the expense of these programs, hopefully without cutting the programs, but maybe reaching some and, uh, having minimal impact on, on what we want to do.
Recent data from the Pennsylvania Youth Survey suggests significant numbers of York Suburban- Over the past three years, two students in the district have taken their own lives. How do you think the board should address this evidence?
Well, this is obviously something much bigger than we can address in a short amount of time here. There are various things that are contributing there, and certainly some of the others have mentioned various things. But one thing that I would like to point out is just kind of going back to what I was talking about with the culture. Again, if a child, if a student is struggling, we want to make sure that they have the avenue to help themselves, some type of restorative practice that where they can go and they can begin to learn how to solve their own problems. That will give them the confidence that, okay, I can turn my life around. I don't have to be in this pattern of, I did poorly, and so now I'm going to do poorly again. So I think there are certainly lots of things that need to be looked at there.
Thank you. Do you have a closing remark?
No, I just want to thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. I know you have a very difficult decision ahead, lots of very qualified candidates here.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And I would like to thank everybody again for coming out tonight. The amount of knowledge and the commitment to this district is just amazing to me. So I am really appreciative of that. I think that no matter who is selected, the board will be the better for it. I think all of you bring something of real value to this group. So at that point, as we're ready to make our deliberations, does anybody need a break before we start, or shall we push through?
Five minutes.
Hmm? Five minutes? Okay. We'll take a five-minute break and then come back and start. Clear? Okay, I think we're back in session.
I'd also like to say, as a board member, I'm sure that I'm not the only one who has this view of just how impressed I am. And I wish there was a way to amend the rules that I could vote for more than one. So I just want to thank you all for being here. And I hope that, no matter how this comes out, that you all stay connected in increasing ways with the district. And of course, there's a general election in two years. So I just want to convey a sense of pride, I would say, that there's such an interest in the district that it would bring out the kind of quality that we're experiencing here tonight. So thank you.
So at this point, I will open for nomination.
I would like a review of what the procedure is.
Okay. We will open to nominations. Any nomination hits the table. In the first round, each board member gets one vote. At the end of it, we take the top, top three, is that right?
It says, "Three nominees with the most votes are carried forward." And I think the question is, do you vote on each nomination excessively the whole way through, so everybody votes on one nominee, and then you move to the second nominee? Or are you voting one time and everyone states a name? That's my question. I think you could read it either way. It says a roll call vote is conducted for each of the nominations, but then it says board members may only vote for one nominee. So you'd have to check to make sure if you did it one successive nominee at a time, that there were no's in every other vote, if someone votes yes. So I don't recall what you did last time. Corinne has a memory.
I looked exactly at the minutes and we had-
One nominee at a time?
Yeah, and we, and people voted right up until the end, yes or no, on multiple candidates.
Right, and then we did another round.
That's how we do it.
Until only, until-
I remember as well.
Anyone who didn't get five, dropped.
Correct.
When we did that.
There is no required school board procedure.
So what is the will of the table?
Thought that procedure worked well the last time.
So for each name, we each, we can, we'll each get a vote?
Vote yes or, you vote yes or no-
On each name.
On each name.
Each name that's nominated.
Each of the nominees, okay, but there's-
That's the way we did it last time.
But technically, by your policy, you can only vote for one nominee. That's what it says.
Only vote yes once.
That's what it says. I don't have a recollection. I've been through many of these, so I don't recall what you did last time.
So what is the will of the table?
I recall writing the policy, and I thought we wrote it exactly the way we did it last time.
The only having one vote is what's throwing-
So-
Yeah, it's listed there. I don't know why.
The table, is the table comfortable with once the nominees are on the table? You can vote for as many as you want?
I'm comfortable with that, what we did last time. And it worked.
That's how we did it. Back at the numbers.
That's how we did it last time.
Good over here.
Because otherwise, you'll never get somebody to-
Okay.
You can suspend that portion of the policy, no problem.
Everybody follow that? [laughing]
I think we have seven degrees between us a little bit.
All right, you want another recap? Okay. So we were going to open to nominations. As many as you want can be nominated. Each name will be read. You can vote for as many as you want. End of it takes five to move forward.
If the candidate does not get five, that means there were not five people willing to vote for that candidate. So they would drop out, lessening the poll.
Okay, got it?
If you wish to, you could formalize it by suspending that portion of nine B in your policy. It's up to you.
Do I have a motion to suspend nine B?
It's the second one.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, thank you. All right, the floor is open to nominations. Mr. Sears.
I would like to nominate Steve Sullivan.
Okay.
Mr. Gilfert Smith.
I'm going to put everybody in here, huh?
Yeah.
Good? All right, so we have Mr. Sullivan, Ms. Maton, Ms. Jackson, Mr. Smith, I can't even read my own writing, Mr. Williams, and Mr. Wond. Going once? Okay. So who calls? Okay.
Yeah, yeah, the board stated a roll call is conducted for each nomination.
Okay, so the first one is for Steve Sullivan. Mr. Posnow.
Yes.
Mr. Sears.
Yes.
Mr. Sanders.
Yes.
Mrs. Fryrick.
Yes.
Mrs. Schrader.
No.
Mr. Skollet.
Yes.
Mr. Robinson.
No.
Mr. Toman.
Yes.
Next call is for Jessica Maton. Mr. Toman.
No.
Mrs. Schrader.
Yes.
Mr. Posnow.
Yes.
Mr. Sears.
No.
Mr. Skollet.
No.
Mrs. Fryrick.
Yes.
Mr. Sanders.
No.
Mr. Robinson.
No.
Next one is for Jackson. Mr. Toman.
No.
Mr. Sears.
Yes.
Mr. Robinson.
Yes.
Mr. Skollet.
Yes.
Mrs. Schrader.
No.
Mr. Posnow.
No.
Mrs. Schrader.
Yes.
Mr. Williams. Is next Mr. Sears.
No.
Mrs. Schrader.
No.
Mr. Skollet.
No.
Mr. Sanders.
Yes.
Mr. Posnow.
Yes.
Mr. Robinson.
Yes.
Mr. Skollet.
Yes.
Mrs. Fryrick.
No.
Mr. Sears.
No.
Mr. Robinson.
Yes.
Mr. Sanders.
No.
Mr. Posnow.
Yes.
Mrs. Schrader.
Yes.
Mr. Williams. Is next Mr. Sears.
No.
Mrs. Schrader.
No.
Mr. Skollet.
No.
Mr. Sanders.
Yes.
Mr. Posnow.
Yes.
Mr. Robinson.
No.
Mr. Toman.
Yes.
Mrs. Fryrick.
No.
For Mr. Wond, Mrs. Schrader.
Yes.
Mr. Sanders.
Yes.
Mrs. Fryrick.
Yes.
Mr. Toman.
Yes.
Mrs. Fryrick.
No.
For Mr. Wond, Mrs. Schrader.
Yes.
Mr. Sanders.
Yes.
Mrs. Fryrick.
Yes.
Mr. Toman.
Yes.
Mr. Posnow.
Yes.
Mr. Robinson.
Yes.
Mr. Skollet.
No.
Mr. Sears.
No.
Mr. Posnow.
Yes.
Mr. Robinson.
Yes.
Mr. Skollet.
No.
Mr. Sears.
No.
Mr. Toman.
Yes.
Mrs. Fryrick.
Yes.
Mr. Sears.
Yes.
Mr. Robinson.
Yes.
Mr. Skollet.
Yes.
Mrs. Schrader.
No.
Mr. Posnow.
No.
Mr. Sanders.
Yes.
Mrs. Fryrick.
No.
Next one is for Mr. Smith. Mr. Toman.
Yes.
Mr. Skollet.
Yes.
Mrs. Fryrick.
No.
Mr. Sears.
No.
Mr. Toman.
Yes.
Mrs. Fryrick.
Yes.
Mr. Williams is next. Mr. Sears.
No.
Mrs. Schrader.
No.
Mr. Toman.
No.
Mr. Skollet.
Yes.
Mrs. Fryrick.
Yes.
Mr. Sears.
Yes.
Mr. Posnow.
Yes.
For Mr. Smith. Mr. Sanders.
No.
Mrs. Schrader.
No.
Mr. Toman.
No.
Mr. Skollet.
Yes.
Mrs. Schrader.
No.
Mr. Toman.
No.
Mr. Skollet.
Yes.
Mrs. Fryrick.
Yes.
Mr. Sears.
Yes.
Mr. Posnow.
Yes.
For Mr. Smith. Mr. Sanders.
No.
Mr. Sears.
No.
Mrs. Schrader.
Yes.
Mr. Posnow.
Yes.
For Mr. Smith. Mr. Sanders.
No.
Mr. Sears.
No.
Mrs. Schrader.
Yes.
Mr. Posnow.
Yes.
Mr. Robinson.
Yes.
Mrs. Fryrick.
No.
Mr. Skollet.
Yes.
Mr. Toman.
No.
Mrs. Fryrick.
Yes.
Mr. Skollet.
Yes.
Mr. Toman.
No.
Mrs. Fryrick.
Yes.
Mr. Toman.
No.
Mrs. Fryrick.
Yes.
Mr. Posnow.
No.
Mr. Sanders.
Yes.
Mr. Robinson.
Yes.
Mr. Skollet.
No.
Mr. Sears.
No.
Mr. Toman.
Yes.
Mrs. Fryrick.
Yes.
Okay, I have two with five. That would be Mr. Sullivan and Mr. Wond.
Correct.
Now they can only vote for Wond, correct?
In the event of a tie for the selection, a third roll call is taken. I mean-
Work so far.
It's really up to you.
We suspended the rule. I guess we keep going with the thing.
I'm considering that line struck on every single one. Okay, so. Okay, for Mr. Sullivan, Mr. Posnow.
Yes.
Mr. Sears.
Yes.
Mr. Sanders.
Yes.
Mrs. Fryrick.
Yes.
Mr. Schrader.
No.
Mr. Skollet.
Yes.
Mr. Robinson.
No.
Mr. Sanders.
Yes.
Mr. Toman.
Yes.
Mrs. Fryrick.
No.
Mr. Sears.
No.
Mr. Robinson.
Yes.
Mr. Skollet.
Yes.
Mrs. Schrader.
No.
Mr. Toman.
No.
Mrs. Fryrick.
No.
For Mr. Wond, Mrs. Schrader.
Yes.
Mr. Sanders.
Yes.
Mrs. Fryrick.
Yes.
Mr. Toman.